And we will begin our evening with an invocation by Chief Mike Brown and the presidential agents will be led by Councilmember Eddie Price.
Heavenly Father, we come to you tonight thanking you for the blessings we share and for the life of your servant and our friend Carol Scott. Please be with his family and the City of Ulysses family as we take our first steps without his smile, his spirit, and his servant's heart. Bless this council and those who come each day to serve the citizens of this city. Bless the volunteers who give their time to serve and the employees who come every day to do the best in the service of others. God has corrected us and forgive us our failures. Amen.
(Inaudible) (Inaudible) (Inaudible)
Now we get to the fun things of the evening. And I would like to give my apologies to Chris Barker and all the chance to come forward as we have already had for the 15 years that he has been here. And we continue to be with him.
(Laughter) Well, Mayor, the council and the audience, this is Chris Barker, Assistant Chief Manager. Obviously, he's been here 15 years. He graduated from Texas A&amp;M, so that's the reason, even though that says 15 years in a minute to an Aggie, you've got to explain a little more, so that's what that means in 15 years. I told someone earlier that Chris started his college career at Glenn Junior College, and he quickly corrected me, he did not, it was a thousand. So I guess he, Chris Warren, he told me that, but he started at Carl.
Actually, I started when she was in law.
(Laughter) He chased you around?
Yep.
Chris grew up in what possibly is the most attractive environment that I could imagine. Some of my fondest memories as a child were going to church youth camp. Well, Chris grew up at a church youth camp in Windrose.
That's true.
And grew up in Windrose and went away. At some point in time, he went to several colleges and got kicked out. Ultimately, wound up at one of the underperforming colleges in our state, Texas A&amp;M. And they've done better since then. But Chris got a degree in agronomy. And if you ever want to go into management, city management, you always want to start with a degree in agronomy. That's your life. Chris started at our golf course as an assistant golf course superintendent. And Doug Ditches, put in irrigation system, was actually there the day that our golf course opened. And he's grown, been in public works, in planning, and in city management for the last two years. One of the great things you can talk about Chris is his family. I have heard that he's known his mom and dad through the church with. They're great people. He came with a great family. And he and Alyssa are the parents of two great children. Anna and Alex, Anna was here. Anna is the prettiest woman I've ever seen. Alex is a good-looking guy, but Anna is a pretty girl. And they go to like Christian school and across Timber Church and very active in their church, very active in their community and school out there and just great people here for real. Chris is here with us for 15 years and hope he will be here for 20 or 25 or whatever. Don't expect me to care of 25 years. Thank you.
Next, we have a 25-year pin. And I would like to ask Lieutenant Wayne Pavlic and all the PD families, come in. Witness Wayne, 25-year pin, Chief Brown. Well, for me, but Chief Brown, fine.
Mayor, council, since I'd like to introduce you, Wayne Pavlic. Wayne, would you introduce your wife?
My wife, Charlotte.
Charlotte. Before we get too far into this, 25 years, Charlotte, I want to thank you for sharing Wayne with us for 25 years. That's a lot of missed birthday parties and Christmases and holidays and family events that had to go on the back burner so that he could come serve as citizens of Ulysses. And on behalf of all the citizens, I have to please thank you for sharing him with us. After, there's very few people I have to look up to. But I look up, but not just because he's taller than me, I look up to him because of the outstanding job he does. Of course, he came to us in 1989, promoted to Corporal in 1993, promoted to Sergeant in 1997. Once he was Sergeant, he was in patrol, then he went to administration. 19, or 2004 promoted Lieutenant, was over criminal investigation, was a watch commander in patrol, was over our jail operations, was over our communications, and now he kind of shares both of those dual roles until we could get some more help to him. He's the Lieutenant over the jail and our communications section. Nominated for Officer of the Year three times, 93, 94, 97. Nominated as Supervisor of the Year five times. Was awarded that award in 2006. Nominated 2007, the Black History Stare Award. In 2012, this past year, he received a certificate of merit. Him and several other law enforcement agencies and people from within our agency worked a undercover operation that netted a seizure of $5.4 million. And all those dollars went through his hands, they were up. We took that money and we were able to buy a radio system with it, hire some police officers, and we had to split it with our friends at the comptroller's office. But that would not have happened without his efforts and the way that he attacked that program. And from the day one we started, he said, "I'm all in with the chief." And it was just solid three years of work. That was a full-time job, plus he kept other things, the police department, the jail running, the communications running. There was nothing that we didn't ask him to do that he did not step up and not only do, but excel at doing. He is the kind of guy that if you had more likely, you'd need fewer people. He was just that kind of guy that is obviously well-respected by his fellow employees. They're the ones that nominated for Supervisor of the Year awards. And a great thing about him, great, great police officer, what he does for Special Olympics. He is very involved in Special Olympics, torch run, law enforcement torch run. He either runs or he sells the T-shirts. And every year, everybody waits for the T-shirts to come out, and the day that we see Wayne to get one. He's got two sons, and he wants to be here with you today, but they're every bit as big as he is. So you don't want to, I wouldn't want to have to feed them, that's all I am. But what I want to, what I want to do is thank Wayne, 25 years, awesome, just outstanding work, the way that you served citizens of Ulysses, the way that you served your fellow employees is just outstanding. We've got 25 years in, let's do another 25 years together. All right?
And now we move to George Charles for the 11th. So thank you. (Inaudible) At this point, we'll move on to the consent agenda items. Oh, excuse me. I did not. Mr. Payne, would you please talk about item number two, presentation scholarship recommendations.
Thanks, Mayor. Occasionally, we're called upon in life to do what, I don't use the word awesome very often, but I use the word awesome responsibilities. And about six to eight weeks ago, I was called upon by a very dear friend of mine and the city and our employee family to do something that I've never done before. And this person wanted to select a child of a current Ulysses employee to be the recipient of some scholarship fund. And the first priority was that their name be anonymous. And so the donor's name will not be disclosed here or at any time thereafter. They provided very, very specific criteria that they wanted this person to fulfill. And some of those was to come from a good family, to come from a family that exhibited good spiritual beliefs and a good spiritual walk, which we don't deal with a lot in government quite often, but this was a private donor making a private request. But they had a very lengthy list of specific criteria. The selection process was to remain anonymous, and at first, the honoree was going to be anonymous. So I have sought out to solicit applications from our employees who had children who were graduating from high school this year, was planning to go on to college. And from that, we took those applications. Each and every one of them were great, great applicants. However, remember, we were working off a specific criteria from the donor. And it was my pleasure, two, three weeks ago, to present the honoree with a scholarship privately donated. The honoree was Ms. Elise Thork. Elise, if you could come up here and you bring your mom and dad. And I want to tell you, I want to read a little bit for you from her application. And I tried to highlight a few of the things that were specifically called out in the criteria by the donor. And these are direct quotes from Elise's application. "So there are many things that are important in my life, beginning with my relationship with God, which has shaped my life in morals and positive direction. I enjoy attending church, and Christianity is my priority in life. My family supports me through every situation and decision I've made, and I'm beyond thankful for them. My advanced placement classes challenge and motivate me to work harder to reach my goals. I love learning and being involved in many organizations. Being involved in my community is another important component in my life." Some of the organizations that she's involved in, National Honor Society, the Scholar Ambassador Program, that is an organization that requires her to take at least three advanced placement courses and provide 100 hours of community service. Additionally, she's a member of the National Honor Society. From that, she had to volunteer an additional 40 hours of community service that began the summer before her senior year and continued to the fall. Another organization that she is involved in is called Best Buddies. I had never heard of Best Buddies, but I think Best Buddies is a pretty good organization. Best Buddies is an organization designed to help kids with special needs, you know, more than thought, both inside and outside of school. She's also involved with a peer buddy, which is part of that. And from that, she's assigned to this buddy, talks with him every week, and spends time a few days a month. She's also a member of the Spanish, National Spanish Honor Society. She will be attending Glenn Junior College this fall, which I made fun of the Aggies while I go, is right outside of the A&amp;M campus, and it is kind of a preparatory school for those that intend to go on to Texas A&amp;M. And she will seek an undergraduate degree in accounting and continue, hopefully, with graduate school, and her long-term plan is to become a lawyer and practice corporate law.
Good choice.
Elise says that being awarded this scholarship will assist her with paying her education expenses, tuition, rent, board, and everything. She's saving money from her sober job that she worked last summer, and she's working again this summer, I think, at the Ulysses Family Lab Aquatic Center. Her dad, Randy, and this is, if you, there is no greater love than sacrificial love. And sacrifice as a dad of dad is to be in the home and then to work an extra job so that your child can better herself. And that's what Randy is doing. And Elise greatly points that out. It's their intent to go through college and limit debt. And this is something that knowing our donor is important to that family, is the limitation of debt and the good expenditure of funds. And thus, she's working part-time, and Randy is working part-time. She'll continue to study and work hard to accomplish her goals, and this is something that no one else said that impressed the selection a great deal, because she specifically said, "I will not waste the funds from this scholarship." And Elise, I thought that was pretty impressive. Now, this is a little awkward to me because her mother, Dunette, works in our office, and Dunette is one of my favorite people in the world. I love Dunette Thorpe and her whole family. And so after seeing and hearing the qualities of this recipient of the scholarship, the donor called and said, "I would like to double the amount of the scholarship." So, Ms. Elise, on behalf of a wonderful family of this community that loves Ulysses and loves our employees and our families, it is my pleasure to present to you the exact same amount that you've already received and to wish you the absolute best. And I wish I could tell you who this person was, so you could say thank you, but I sent them a copy of this, and knowing them, they were going to thank you. So thank you so much, and do well.
Yes, we'd all like to congratulate you.
By the way, whilst he's taking hand, I might tell you that Randy and Dunette have a son that now lives in Utah, but he was drafted into Major League Baseball two, three years ago, and now he's still working in the ball. Finally, my little contract is like my little ball, so these are great people.
We will try this again. We will now move on to the consent agenda items, and I will ask Ms. Yetul to hit the high points of each consent agenda item. Mayor and council, item three of your consent agenda is to consider award of bid 00814, authorizing the purchase of five three-quarter time pickups for various city departments. There were five bidders, and the recommended vendor is the low bidder, Jack Stane Ford. This is replacing, replacing five existing units that were scheduled for replacement in our fiscal year 2014 budget, and the estimated cost is $93,730, which is under our budget amount. Item number four is to consider award of bid number 011-14 for the annual contract for concrete repairs to TJ Concrete. TJ Concrete was the sole bidder, and this contract will cover various types of concrete work, including flatwork, urban gutter, ADA ramps, driveways, and drive approaches, and that will be on an as-needed basis. Item number five is to consider the extension of a contract for RFP 012-10 with WebTPA for third-party administration, utilization management, and care management for the City of Ulysses Health Plan. The network and pre-certification will be provided by Etna, and this is a two-year contract beginning October 1 of 2014 and ending September 30 of 2016. The extension includes an increase of approximately 2.8%, which staff believes is reasonable, so we recommend your approval. Item number six is to consider approval of Resolution 14-1430, requesting financial assistance and authorizing an application to be filed with the Texas Water Development Board. The Texas Water Development Board has a program called the Drinking Water State Revolving Fund that provides low-interest financing to municipal water systems. The city has a planned capital project for the replacement of aging water meters that qualifies for this program, and staff is seeking your approval to submit an application for these low-interest funds. And then item number seven is to consider approval of the minutes of May 27, 2014. Thank you. Council, do we have any questions or comments?
Mayor, I move to approve.
Mayor, I'll second. Thank you. The motion's been made by Councilmember Siniford and seconded by Mayor Cartim Islandfeld. And at this point, if there are no further comments, I'll ask you to cast your vote. The motion passes. Item number eight is to consider authorizing the mayor to execute instruments pertaining Trinity River authority easements. These will be TRA permanent sanitary sewer easements, permanent meter station easement, and temporary construction easements. And this is all to improve the water and sewer lines that TRA will be improving in the near future, that's why they need these easements. So at this point, council, any questions or comments? With your pleasure.
I move to approve.
I'll second.
Thank you. The motion's been made by Councilmember Porterfield and seconded by Councilmember Lyman. And at this time, I'll ask you to cast your votes. The motion passes. Item number nine is a request by Mr. Bose Thomas to address the City Council regarding dollar general constructions. However, Mr. Bose, Mr. Thomas has requested that Mr. Kenneth Teis make the comments this evening. Before, Mr. Teis, if you might come forward and give us your name and your address.
Hi. My name is Kenneth Teis, and I live at 1811 Long Bow Trail in Ulysses, 76040.
Thank you, Mr. Teis. At this time, Ms. Rose, our city attorney, needs to explain some parameters regarding what we are permitted by law to do and not to do.
Thank you, Mayor. This issue came up in the pre-council meeting, and for the audience, what's posted on the agenda is a discussion regarding the dollar general construction on Highway 10. And according to the Open Meetings Act, we've got to limit the discussion to what is posted on the agenda. So I just wanted to clarify with the council and for the audience that the council should just limit your discussion if you have any with presentation or with the speaker, I'm just doing that specifically, and we're not getting off the topic of that, because otherwise we'd be trying from the requirements we're going to be using.
Thank you. Mr. Teis, would you ask that you lend me your comments to bypass, please?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
As I said, my name is Kenneth Teis, and I'm the president of HOA Villas at Texas Star. And I'm sorry, I'm reading from a pre-prepared script, but I do need to provide what I'm going to present today to my residents. We have 110 homeowners in our residential community across from Texas Star Golf Course, right down the road on Highway 10. Currently, I believe we are only, we are one of the only two communities with an average home value of $300,000 or greater paying both City of Ulysses and HUBI taxes. So I believe we have mutual interest to see our community continue to grow and prosper and becoming even more fabulous. Tonight, we have three points that we would like to be heard in relation to the dollar general store that is approved, being constructed immediately to our subdivision. First, we would like to express our disappointment in not having the knowledge of the planned development earlier in the process. We understand that you are not legally bound to send formal notification, but the courtesy would have been greatly appreciated. I'm not saying that we could have prevented the company from moving in, but it would have been nice to have the opportunity to try. Second, we'd like to express our concern in having this type of establishment so close in proximity to our neighborhood. The concerns from the homeowners, which I have some with me today, are too numerous to cover all of them, but centered around decreased home values, increased cut-through traffic, both vehicular and pedestrian, and an increase in undesired activity and crime within and around our neighborhood. I have a stack of articles from our homeowners in my email to these owner concerns. In 2013, $40 dollar general stores just within the Houston vicinity were robbed within the span of only two months. A researcher at UCLA statistically correlated the existence of dollar stores to an increase of crime in the immediate surrounding area. Another shows opposition in states from California all the way to Florida. Now, will all this happen in our specific location in Ulysses? Maybe, maybe not. I'd like to think not, that we're right down the road from a police department, but we're not willing to sit back and wait and see. Now, to be fair, I did find a positive article that talked about new development of dollar store and how it would prevent homeowners from having to travel to another city, but that doesn't necessarily apply here, since we already have three on Highway 10 or in the City of Ulysses and $71 dollar stores within 10 miles of 76040. So I think we are efficiently covered. Third and last, and I'll make it quick. We understand your hands may need time. The lot was commercial, it was zoned that way, you may not be able to do anything about it. Construction may be inevitable. Personally, you may actually want the dollar general store there. As homeowners of Villas at Texas Star, we do not. But if that's the case, that's fine. At least give us a chance or an opportunity to protect our neighborhood, our home values, our families, and our safety. I appreciate the conversations we've had so far with Mike Collins, with Stephen Cook. They've been very gracious to come out and spend time with us on their own time in our neighborhood. But tonight, we want you to hear our concerns, and we want to formally ask you to let us implement measures to separate our residential community from the commercial property where the dollar general will sit. This is in an attempt to minimize the fallout of our home values and to maintain a high level of safety and security, which are my greatest concerns as the president of this HOA. At last check, over 80% of our 110 homes had children, including mine, with a two-year-old and a three-month-old. So I'm absolutely committed to each and every one of them, and I hope you will be too in this matter in allowing us to do something about it. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Teis. Would anyone on council like to make any comments this evening? I believe that staff is already working with your neighborhood group to try and address some of your concerns, and we will certainly give careful consideration to your comments this evening. I do understand that Mr. Thomas and Mr. Carrasco indicated a desire to make a few comments as well. If you would like to come up, one at a time, whichever you choose, and we'll let them make their comments as well.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Payne. Please, if you would please give us your name and address.
My name is Vicente Carrasco. My address is 1812 Double Arrow here in Ulysses in the Texas Star community. And Mr. Thomas pretty much covered the comments that we all very have a lot of concern with. I just wanted to interrate that it would be nice to have a wall with some very mature as possible trees established along the, uh... to cover all of them, but centered around decreased home values, increased cut-through traffic, both vehicular and pedestrian, and an increase in undesired activity and crime within and around our neighborhood. I have a stack of articles from our homeowners, and my email appeals owner concerns. In 2013, $40 Dollar General stores just within the Houston vicinity were robbed within the span of only two months. A researcher at UCLA statistically correlated the existence of dollar stores to an increase of crime in the immediate surrounding area. Another shows opposition in states from California all the way to Florida. Now, will all this happen in our specific location in Ulysses? Maybe, maybe not. I'd like to think not, that we're right down the road from a police department, but we're not willing to sit back and wait and see. Now, to be fair, I did find a positive article that talked about new development of the Dollar Store and how it would prevent homeowners from having to travel to another city, but that doesn't necessarily apply here since we already have three on Highway 10 or in the City of Ulysses and $71 Dollar Stores within 10 miles of 76040. So, I think we are efficiently covered. Third and last, and I'll make it quick. We understand your hands may be tied. The lot was commercial. It was zoned that way, and you may not be able to do anything about it. Construction may be inevitable. Personally, you may actually want the Dollar General store there. As homeowners of the Villas of Texas Star, we do not. But if that's the case, that's fine. At least give us a chance or an opportunity to protect our neighborhood, our home values, our families, and our safety. I appreciate the conversations we've had so far with Mike Holland, with Stephen Cook. They've been very gracious to come out and spend time with us on their own time in our neighborhood. But tonight, we want you to hear our concerns, and we want to formally ask you to let us implement measures to separate our residential community from the commercial property where the Dollar General will sit. This is in an attempt to minimize the fallout of our home values and to maintain a high level of safety and security, which are my greatest concerns as the president of this HOA. At last check, over 80% of our 110 homes had children, including mine, with a two-year-old and a three-month-old. So, I'm absolutely committed to each and every one of them, and I hope you will be too in this matter in allowing us to do something about this. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Tice. Would anyone on Council like to make any comments this time? I believe that staff is already working with your neighborhood group to try and address some of your concerns, and we will certainly give careful consideration to your comments this evening. I do understand that Mr. Thomas and Mr. Carrasco indicated a desire to make a few comments as well. If you would like to come up, one at a time, whichever you choose, and we'll let them make their comments as well.
Thank you, Mayor.
Please, would you please give us your name and address?
My name is Vicente Carrasco. My address is 1812 Double Barrel here in Ulysses in the Texas Star community. And Mr. Thomas pretty much covered the comments that we all very have a lot of concern with. I just wanted to interlay that it would be nice to have a wall with some very mature as possible trees established along the west boundary of the proposed construction site so that it would eliminate somewhat the pedestrian traffic and some of the issues that we're concerned with. We're even considering, it would be allowed to put a permanent gate at that particular intersection with pedestrian gates with posts that the residents can use. Because right now, we are experiencing quite a bit of short-staff traffic coming from the apartments that exist behind us and some of the neighborhoods that are behind our neighborhood. And we also experience a lot of pedestrian traffic. Yesterday, when Mr. Phil and Mr. Thomas were present, having our meeting, we experienced some traffic after they left because all the children that were playing out on the street, we had to be kind of on the truck because the traffic was coming through at a red, rather, rather high speed and not showing much concern. So, if we could establish the proposed wall on the west boundary with some nice trees to kind of separate it and eliminate some of the traffic, that would be something that we would appreciate, even though I know it's a set and done deal with the construction problem going in there. We would appreciate the consideration there so that our home values will retain and that the neighborhood will prosper. That's basically all I have to say to Mr... My president covered it pretty much. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Carrasco. Mr. Thomas?
Hi, my name is Bose Thomas, and I live at 1806 Double Barrel Drive. And I live in the neighborhood, as Mr. Kenneth Tice spoke about, near the future site of the Dollar General store at 1640 West Ulysses Boulevard. As a community, we realize that the Dollar Store construction will happen no matter what we say. However, we are asking you to take into some type of consideration, some type of separation from the traffic and the nuisance that will be caused by the store. We're asking for a gate of some kind or some type of separation as addressed by Mr. Tice. And I think that's the least that you all can do as a city to your tax-paying residents. The gates, I think, will provide our residents with a peace of mind, knowing our children will be safe playing outside, but also having the peace of mind that our home values will remain the same or higher. So, I want to thank you for your time and taking our request into consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Thomas. And thank you to all the residents who came tonight. We will give, as I said, careful consideration, and I'm certain that staff will continue working with you, and we'll do our best to make everyone happy. So, thank you again for coming. This is the time for public comments. If we have anyone else that would like to come down and speak, this would be the time to do it. Please come and state your name and address.
My name is Harold Easton. I live at 1005 Drive. Over the past couple of months, I've had the opportunity to talk on a lot of buildings. Much of that was to get a point with many of the citizens within the city. And every once in a while, you run into each household where they have a few issues. And this one recently was the sidewalks around the house. It was both on two streets and rolled into the hut. And they said, "Well, what can we do? Can you do something about sidewalks?" Then we get on my smartphone, I got Access Ulysses, took a couple pictures of it, and within a week, repairs were started on their sidewalk. And they sent me the thank you note. Thank you note she delivered to the City of Ulysses for the Access Ulysses and the prompt response that Public Works had in correcting the sidewalk problem. It just started on. I want to take a moment to send you my thank you for the part you played in getting my sidewalks repaired. The city just planted new grass yesterday as well. You accomplished in a few weeks that which I've been unable to do in 15 years. It's just a matter of having access to the new Access Ulysses. And I've used that about five times over the last two months with sidewalks that are uneven here, there, and in various parts of the city, and it's been prompt. In fact, during early voting, there was a sidewalk uneven at the corner of the library over here. So, I took a picture of it and sent it into Access Ulysses. And within, it seemed like, two hours, there was somebody from Public Works over there looking at the sidewalk. The next day, they came over, drilled a hole, removed the bad section, and a couple days later, they've got the new concrete pouring. Almost went over from initial setup, the concrete is so fresh. Anyway, that is a very successful program here in Ulysses. Another item that I took a picture of was a roten bank along the creek that runs just north of Denton Drive. And I thought it was a very dangerous section that had roten away about 10 feet from a picnic table. It was a five-foot drop-off into the creek, which was pretty steep. There were roots protruding that a child was playing out there with a ball or something. And they happened to kick the ball toward the creek and ran over to catch it. They could have fallen in and been seriously injured. Once again, Public Works and I guess the Parks Department has taken aggressive action to remedy that situation. So, once again, the City of Ulysses has come through using Access Ulysses. The other thing I want to comment is on the transparency that has occurred over the last couple of years, particularly posting the presentations of the slides and the audio from the session right here. And even the presentation slides from the work session are very helpful. I missed the last, the last Council meeting as it was election day for the party primaries, and I was asked to burn those. But I was able to get online the very next day after they were posted and get a good synopsis of what happened in the City Council meeting, particularly the seven o'clock session. It would still be nice to have the audio presented for the early work session. The slides are there, and many of them, because in that particular week, there were several developments for construction around the city where the same thing was presented at seven o'clock session, so you could go back to the slides there. I would hope that you would consider audio taping your work session at four o'clock so the slide presentation is more comprehensive or, you know, people know what's going on with slides, like the financial briefing, and others, a bunch of numbers shown on the screen, but no real explanation about the numbers. That's all I have tonight. I thank you for the good work with Ulysses. Thank you.
Thank you. We always appreciate your comments. Council, do we have any reports? Oh, Mr. Carrasco?
Yes, I have just one other question. First one, a little reminder that I wanted to bring to the attention of the City of Ulysses, in reference to the traffic that's cutting across our neighborhood, our dump trucks that are picking up our trash. We have traffic of dump trucks that cut through our neighborhood to pick up dumpsters in the apartment area. But the trucks that come to pick up our residential trash, they leave trash on the roadway. There's a pile of trash in front of my house right now before our trash was picked up, and it fell off the truck, and they don't bother to pick it up. I see that happen throughout the neighborhood. And we have an HOA that's supposed to stay clean. And supposedly, these trucks that come through are responsible for picking up trash and dumping trash on the roadway. And that's something else that I wanted to bring to the Council's attention so that whoever has the contract of these companies, they can be notified of what's occurring. And I'm sure that in Salt Lake somewhere, if that was to happen, it wouldn't be allowed. And I'm disappointed that these, this contract for doing that, the company that picks up our trash, I'm appreciative of when they come pick up our trash, but I would like for them not to dump the trash on the roadway and just right away leave it there. And thank you so much for listening to it. I also want to say thank you to Mr. Phil and Mr. Collins for showing up yesterday. I want to really appreciate the time they took yesterday coming meet with us and hear our complaints and our concerns about the community. And I want to thank you also, thanks so much.
Thank you, Mr. Carrasco. As Mr. Olson explained, the Council cannot respond to you since this was not on our agenda. However, I'll ask Mr. Harlow to speak with you after the meeting. He will be coordinating. You just hold on just a second. Mr. Harlow will speak to you. Any further public comments? Now, Council, any reports? Mr. Olson?
No, Mayor.
Thank you. Any comments?
Mayor, I want to pick up on something that Mr. Easton said, and it really goes along with what Mr. Carrasco said. Well, number one, the issues that were related to the trash that were reported today to Allied Ways. The other thing is, Mr. Easton was talking about the quick response to the Access Ulysses. Please familiarize yourself with that. We've got, I don't know, 12,000, 14,000 residential units in Ulysses. We've got miles and miles of streets and sidewalks, and as good as we'd like to be, we depend on each and every resident here to report things to us. If you have a failure of the trash company to pick up, if they leave trash, if you see a cracked sidewalk, if you see a pothole, if you see any of that, give us a call or use that Access Ulysses. It's available on our website. It's a very easy download to your smartphone, and actually, you can do it. You can take a picture, you can send it to us, and those are responded to basically immediately, how Mr. Easton was saying. But it is very important that our residents report that to us where we can deal with it on a specific basis. So, please help us out by doing that. And if you would kind of consider that your responsibility, our responsibility would be to respond to it in the quickest way possible and most effective way. Thank you.
Mr. McCann is so correct. I can assure you, every single Council member up here uses Access Ulysses on a regular basis. I have nothing further than a couple of quick reminders. Thursday night, the 12th, this Thursday night, we have a town hall meeting. We will primarily focus on the upcoming budget here and talk about wetting store for Ulysses for fiscal year 2014-15. So, we'd love to see you here at seven o'clock on Thursday night. Don't forget, we have a Ulysses Heritage Museum that is only open once every month, and that will be this coming Saturday from 1:00 to 5:00. If you haven't been to the museum, you need to go. Almost every artifact in there is donated by a citizen of Ulysses who's lived here forever. It's a very, very special place put together completely by volunteers. Lastly, on June 15th, there is a Father's Day brunch at Texas Star from 10:00 to 1:00. Give them a call, take your father out. We always take moms out, but sometimes dads get short-changed. So, on that note, that's the manager time, too. And at this time, we will adjourn this meeting and reconvene in closed session.
Yeah, and just so the audience understands, the Council will come back out after the executive session, and it will formally adjourn the regular session at that point in time. I'm not anticipating any action to be taken pursuant to the executive session, but if there were actually to be taken, it would be taken out here in public. So, this meeting will be recessed until the executive session is over, then the Council will come back and formally adjourn this meeting.
Andrew Alcindor.